Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas a common council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's about the proposed rezoning of 670 Airport Road. Director Schrader, would you give us a brief update on that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So, on the agenda today is to request to rezone 670 Airport Road from I-1 Heavy Industrial to I-2 General Industrial. So currently, within this property, it's one larger property located on Airport Road. There's two mini storage facilities or self-storage facilities and then one larger warehouse facility. So, the new owner did come to us and wanted to sell off or subdivide, split those lots, because they're kind of two different uses in that sense. So, what we have is a request to basically split those into two separate lots. However, they would not meet the minimum acreage or the minimum width for an I-2 zoning district or an I-1 zoning district, excuse me. So, the proposal is basically to rezone to I-2 to allow that certified survey map to split those lots. There is a CSM on the agenda a little bit later under the Plan Commission consent items, and that is contingent, again, upon the approval of this rezoning.
With that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to Item 2, which is the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. We do have Kip Golden here this evening to give us an update on the -- we did have Kip. Oh, there he is. To give us an update on the Bryn and Banta projects.
Kip Golden, CFO. Representative for the Bryn project and Banta. When Sam requested this last week, I didn't have great news. I was still in the dark a little bit about everything right now that's delays is all around the environmental contamination that was on the Bryn and the perceived stuff that was on Banta. I'm happy to say last Wednesday, we did get sign-off from the bank's consultant, third-party consultant, that we're good to go on the Bryn. So, we're gearing up on that one. We should be closing here yet this week, but we're gearing up to -- the long lead item on that one is a rebar. We're probably out four weeks on rebar, so we'll be starting digging out there in the next two, three weeks. So, that one will be rocking and rolling. They did request us to do another 16 tests on the inside of Banta, even though we've done millions of -- not millions, but we've done a ton of tests on there and haven't found really anything. But they're being very conservative, good or bad. Anyways, we did get all those tests back last week. We're using Westwood on that one, and all those tests came back good. So, that was submitted to the bank and consultant last Friday in hopes to hear something this week that we can get the Banta project rocking and closed as well. We are obviously doing the asbestos abatement over there and some select demolition at this point, but we're looking forward to hearing the next couple of weeks here to close on both of them, get them rocking and rolling. So, it's been frustrating. I know it's been frustrating for all you. It's certainly been frustrating for all of us, and but we -- and the worst thing is our plan that we had before is this, you know, when we all sat here and split the difference on the contamination, the plan hasn't changed. It's the same plan, but now I finally have approval from the bank. So, we'll be closing on that, and again, Banta, we -- there's literally nothing there. So, but so I'll certainly take any questions. Everybody has anybody or has any, or otherwise, we're looking forward, and you should be seeing something in the next month, rocking and rolling on hopefully both.
Alderman Taylor.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Kip, on the Banta property on the east side, is there any way we could clean up that facade a little bit instead of letting that, you know, it looks so -- it's an interior wall that's exposed now, and it looks pretty rough to the public.
Yeah, it's all getting basically demoed out of there, so to demo it out of there and put something up, it'd be pretty hard. It's gonna -- honestly, it's gonna look like that for, I mean, until we start doing the construction. It's not the way we really can do it at this point.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Kip, you said it'll be like three weeks off because of ordering rebar?
Yes.
So, when we had the groundbreaking in February or whatever, you didn't have the rebar ordered then anyway.
Well, I don't want to -- yeah, I don't want to -- yeah, I couldn't order, yeah. I don't want to order stuff if I don't have the money to pay for it.
Oh.
So, yeah, that would suck.
Oh.
Yeah. No, I don't want to be ordering -- and again, we did take a plunge and obviously demoed some stuff. We kind of went as far as we were willing to go until we got the financing done.
Okay.
Now, again, none of us envisioned it was going to take three months for them to give me the green light, and again, it's been extremely frustrating on all of us. The plan we had back then is the same plan we have now, so nothing's changed, even though we did all additional tests. I think there, we had to do another eight borings. I don't know how many different samples. I mean, one good thing is we found out that basically the perk that's in the water basically must have came in with the fill. There's some foundry sand there, which we knew. Again, all the fill from that site is leaving the site, so we're gonna be cleaning it up. Again, that's the plan that we all agreed to split, so we're ready to rock. The big thing is we need to rebar, because obviously we don't want to open up that hole before we are ready to pour the foundations.
Understood, and thank you. Just continue cutting the grass at the Bryn and the Banta.
Yes, it'll be done, yes. We missed the last time.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I was the one who contacted Sam and said, can we have an update? Because both of them sit in District 1.
Yes.
So, I get a lot of
All good, I understand.
Calls and questions about this, and so I'm gonna be hopeful that by Labor Day, I'm gonna give you a few more weeks here. We'll have some time. And to be clear, the rebar is not on order because the bank loan hasn't come through yet, right?
Correct. Right, we haven't closed on the bank loan, but we did order it now because I was really just waiting for Sigma, because again, this process, they're basically, they have all the control, so I have no control, and the banks rely -- even though we have our own engineers, they're relying on their engineer, and as soon as their engineer gave us the green light, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Everything else is in place.
Yeah, when you said you didn't have any money, I didn't want people to think that --
No, it's financing.
Yeah, I wanted to clear that up for you. And just state my frustration. I'm sure, I know you're extremely frustrated with the Banta building, but to think that the redevelopment authorities spent a lot of money making sure, doing environmental assessments and making sure that everything was ready to go, and then to think that your group has to go through it all again and then some is
There's been more Phase 1s and Phase 2s and 2s and 1/2s and 3s and 4s almost, so, yeah, it's been a frustrating process.
We look forward to seeing big activity
As do I.
In the coming weeks. Thank you.
These environmental groups don't make any money unless they keep doing this.
I'll keep them all shut. We want them to -- I still have one more to get them to approve.
Alderman Grotty.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Kip, question about the Bryn.
Yeah.
Now that the timeline is changing and everything, when do you anticipate, not starting, but completing the project? Is it still the same timeframe that you originally had?
Well, it's not, I mean, the end date was more probably September.
The end date will change, I know that.
I think September of next year is probably when we'll be looking at completion.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming tonight, and we look forward to seeing activity.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 2 is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive Minutes A through F and Communications G through J.
Is there a second? So, motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any questions? Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. On the report of department head officers, I asked the police chief last week about the fireworks complaints this year, and I'll just read the first paragraph for the public. From June 1st through July 8th, we responded to 52 fireworks calls. This is down from 89 fireworks calls last year and just under our five-year average of 60 calls. I know my calls were up this year and not before, but maybe a day or two before, and people noticed, people had very large fireworks this year, very large displays, and it was kind of concerning to them. So, I appreciate the Chief Steiner's follow-up on the fireworks complaint, and also last week on a report of department head officers, I had asked Sam for a report on 540 Broad Street. I know you're busy right now. You might have been on vacation, so maybe next meeting we get to have a report on 540 Broad Street.
And I had told Director Schrader we're not doing that.
And I would like to have one on 109 Racine Street and another one on 408 Second Street, which is the Bertrand Dental Lab. The council took action on landscaping last fall, and if we could have a diagram on what we can expect out there, and so those three properties, next meeting. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I don't think we can agree.
Motion carries. That's fine. I'll talk to him after the meeting. Item F is public comments and any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Just go up to the microphone and
If anybody feels better than I put this on, I will.
You're fine either way. That's up to you.
Okay. I don't know if my five minutes started. I wanted to thank the council, the mayor, all elected officials. They have stock in the city of Manassas. I've been here almost 40 years in Manassas, and you seem to be doing your job as well. Fire, I don't know, Fire and Police Commissioner are here, but they're right up on my list too. Appointed officials, they got a question mark, and they know who they are. Anyways, my subject tonight is safety, protect and serve. The young lady that I'm representing more or less is working probably for the city of Manassas because she's sold over probably two dozen to three dozen properties in Manassas. She likes Manassas, and after renting five years, she's bought the house she's renting. Anyways, I'm not familiar with the easement policy, and on your Boulevard, you're expected to cut it, but if that Japanese flowering, Japanese spine tree dies, the city comes out, removes it, asks the landowner if he wants another one. If so, they plant it; if not, they don't. The easement in the right-of-way for utilities, power and telephone, there's either a four or six-foot easement, I don't know which it is, but there is a 60-foot widowmaker in that easement. I've talked to Aspenwall, I've talked to the city, the utilities, oh, we can't touch it. We can't touch it unless it's laying on the power, laying on the telephone. If this tree comes down, it's going to take her entire house, her garage, possibly the neighbors, and on, you know, on, I hope not, she gets into her car that morning and that tree comes down, that's it. But there's enough widowmakers on the top of this to make the whole village of Greenville a village of widows, and I behoove any of the aldermen that's at 705 Carver Lane, and there's nothing close to it that a tree jockey without a 90-foot boom could touch, because there's nothing solid to hold on to, but it could come down anytime. In my 30 years of utility work, I've talked to your people on the power company and stuff and say, well, we can't touch it because it's private property, but if they would happen to drop a transformer off one of those bolts to a garage roof, they're still liable. But 99% of those linemen don't want to go up there in the storm. This is what happens. When the storm blows it down, we remove the tree off the lines, we fix the lines, and then it's up to -- but in my 30-some years of working for AT&amp;T, only once, but all it takes is once, one block west of Richmond and a block and a half north of Wisconsin, I was called on a problem, lines down, go fix them. A tree had fallen in the backyard. By this time, the hole was patched, everything, and after I got the telephone line back up, I went through the house to check all the jacks, the upstairs bedroom that that occupant used. Here, the queen-size bed had a five-to-six-inch hole through the center of that bed. Luckily enough, he worked night shift. Now, I'm not one for movies, but Back to the Future, do we want this to happen again? Like I said, in 30-plus years, I saw it once, but all it takes is once, and protect and serve, I don't feel that she should be -- in fact, the tree is actually more on the Kinsey Court address. The power line's right in the middle of the easement. It's more on the Kinsey Court, but it leans her way, but it could take her house, her garage, her car, possibly 707 and possibly 703. And I just feel that with Aspenwall or the tree trimmers you have, or the 90-foot ladder truck that's the fire department, let's pretend there's a cat up there and just keep on cutting off a piece so he can't go up that high any longer. But I do ask for something to be done. I'd like a reply. My name's William Malm. I live at 704 Carver Lane, so I'm kind of on, if I was in two districts, I'd be one on Tacon, I'd be one on Carver Lane. But Mr. Langdon did come over, Mr. Taylor did come over, Mr. Langdon did take pictures, and I don't know if he has shared them with them, but he does have pictures of it, and I don't think you'd want to sleep through the night in a storm knowing that that was and maybe your children, and if you're not children and people-friendly, what if her dog Reese was in that upstairs bedroom? And a beautiful golden retriever. I'm her adopted grandfather, but I ask for something to be looked at, and in your busy mornings or afternoons or whatever, just take a ride past 704 and look at that tree and see if you'd want that looming over your head. So, that's all I've got to say, and I thank the council for, and like I said, you'll probably see me again because I got three nicknames. One's Bilbo, because I look like a hobbit, my kids say. One is Wally, because I have no neck like a walrus, and the other one, I wouldn't relish, I'd relish the thought of being called Ralphie, because I don't think Ralph Nader was the worst person in the world, and he was a, you know, for justice for groups and cities, towns, counties. So, anyways, I thank the council for listening to me, and I would appreciate any kind of rebuttal, you know, and if there, is there any questions by any of you?
Sure. What we'll do is we'll send our arborists out there to take a look at it, and we'll determine if it's a dangerous tree, and we'll get back to you, okay?
Okay. There is no, I know when Aspenwall comes in there and they say if they're six inches away from the power or whatever, they trim it off, but this is a tree 60 feet tall. There are no limbs that are six inches away from the power, but if it goes, it's gonna take possibly three residences and maybe life.
Sure. We'll take a look and we'll get back with you, okay?
Okay, and 704 Carver Lane, phone number 725-3337, and I do have a recorder on it.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you, council.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Tim Jacobson, 955 Plank Road. Maybe for the last time, but I did say I would come in person when you guys got back into the house, and thank you for all your efforts on the public works facility, and man of my word, I'm here to do that tonight. That mission started back in 1993, and what you have now is a true asset for our community and something that you all can be proud of, and all the department heads and all, even Thad, but But thank you very much for all your efforts and your endeavors and everything you've done. It's truly an asset for the community. Spent 40 years working out of the old one and took a couple of tours through the new one, and it's definitely a dream come true. The other thing that I have questions for tonight, and I don't want to throw a wet blanket on everybody, but reading about and listening to and watching a lot of discussions, mostly nationally, about reparations for slavery and how some communities have already stepped forward and started trying to pay them, and I think before, and I figured this was the place to start with my questions, it's the local government, but before Manassas would start to move in that direction, questions I have is, in Wisconsin, when Congress opened up the territory that included Wisconsin up for settlement, one of their first rules was no slavery. So, Wisconsin never had slavery, but they did send many thousands of men and tons of material and supplies to put an end to slavery. And if we're gonna be forced to pay reparations for slavery, my question is, on the flipside of that coin, can the taxpayers of Wisconsin send an invoice for their losses for that endeavor? And the other thing, you'd be doing an injustice if this council and the mayor didn't use every inch of their authority to make sure Critical Race Theory, the 1619 Project and things like that do not make it into our schools or our community as a whole. Some of these efforts are being done to divide this country, and I'll tell you what, the Civil War was brutal. We all know that, but you go back to the Revolutionary War when the country is divided between patriots and loyalists, and read some of the letters and diaries and books about that, and you'll see what viciousness really was, and the only people that want that are bloodthirsty animals. We're here as Americans, we have one flag, and we need to get this stuff settled and work forward on projects like we just got done for Public Works in all our community. I know we got, we have a mixed-race block where I live, and I tell all the kids, watch out for cars every time they're out playing, and it doesn't matter who or what they are. That's what America is. So, if there's anything that I've unspoken that is wrong, I would like my aldermen or anybody from the administration to correct me, but as a council and administration for our community, watch where you're going and watch who comes after you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening?
Sandra DeBeille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. First, I will ask, again, I asked several weeks ago, for the amount of funds that the city will be receiving from the federal government under the American Rescue. I believe you receive some now, and you'll be receiving some in the future, and I think it behooves the public to know and the council to know and have a community discussion on what to do with those one-time-only funds. Then, with my time remaining, I'm going to try to discuss two TIF amendments that are on your packet tonight. I'll start with TIF 11. The TIF is scheduled to close in 2034. For the people in the public that aren't familiar, that was created for the Gilbert Paper Mill site, to demo it and set it for redevelopment. It's been demoed. Very little has happened since that time. There has been an office building built and efforts to improve a warehouse, but other than that, not much. Currently, from what I have read, that TIF is in the red, and projections, according to what I have read, were that the closure, it will be in the red $54,000. However, at the Joint Review Board meeting, they recalculated, and it might be positive $50,000 if all goes well. What you are amending tonight is, in addition to the Gilbert site, adding the Banta site. Currently, the Banta site is valued at $0. So, going forward, the school district, the county, the technical college, and the city will gain nothing until the closure of that TIF off of that project. The city will get the increment. Furthermore, the project, there is no project other than infrastructure, because the current developer of the Banta site has yet to ask the city for subsidy. So, this is all going toward Manassas Utilities for a project that they didn't finish, but they went to the PSE to have our rates increased to finish their work for underground utilities for the Racine Street Bridge. It's for telephone poles, sewer, water, and extending Oak Street. It's not a project. It's not jobs. So, to me, it's not worthy of having this added on, and the school district, if I believe right, they'll actually be losing about $10 million. At the Plan Commission, there was a public hearing, and not one member of the Plan Commission asked a question. That's why I'm here tonight. I will ask the questions, and as Alderman Sevigny mentioned earlier, I'll just be devil's advocate. I know that, I know you will vote for it, because I know you want that Banta property and the Gilbert site redeveloped, but we're not gaining anything by adding this territory. It's all things that should be done on the tax levy and not buried in to the TIF. And as stated in Sam's memo, it said, if the boundaries of the district are expanded, the city will be able to capitalize and use the increment from the Banta site to bring the existing district out of the red. That's why you want to do this. Then, on to TIF 13. TIF 13 is downtown. If I recall, this is to be closed in 2042. This was established for the office tower and the parking lot. What you're looking at doing is, tonight, entering into a development agreement for developers to take the beautiful building next to the waterfront bridge and convert that former office building into apartments. No jobs. It's not creating a corporate headquarters. It's not drawing people into Manassas. It's not a hotel or a banquet facility, waterfront restaurant. It's none of those things that will attract people to the downtown. It's an apartment, and I don't know who's gonna live in a downtown with no jobs. And again, what we are looking to do with this is use the increment to beef up the historic buildings and other buildings in the downtown that people have owned for decades and didn't want to stick a dime into them, but now we can use city taxpayer dollars to do that. Let's remodel all those buildings. Oh, their upstairs isn't being used? Let's make apartments, all on the city tax dollar. Most of those buildings are used as write-offs on their taxes, and that does say nothing to those businesses that have invested heavily in the downtown with their own money. It's, to me, it's a slap in the face that we're gonna then turn around and hand out money to others that really don't care, and that's what we're doing with that money. We're going to give developers money to convert an existing office building into apartments, yet at the previous meeting, the owner of 140 Main, who is not getting any TIF assistance, was basically harassed because he hasn't been able to convert his building into apartments yet. It's hypocritical to ask one to do it without any TIF assistance and then hand over millions of dollars to another.
We're over six minutes at this point.
Thank you. I figured you'd cut me off. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? No? You look like you're ready to stand up, Kyle. Yes or no? Okay. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Or Alderman Sevigny?
You want to hold over some items, is your question? So, I'd like to hold over items two, three, and four.
Would you care to make a motion for the other two then?
Sure. Well, I didn't know if anyone else had.
Okay, with that, Mayor, at this time, I'll move that we approve items one and five, one being the minutes of the common council, 7/6 of '21, and five, the Planning Commission's recommendation for the approval of the certified survey map at 670 Airport Road.
Here's a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item two is the Administration Committee recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, as recommended by the Administration Committee, the proposed service contract with Ellers and Associates for the consideration of analyzing the feasibility, developing the plan, and administering the approvals of a project plan and boundary amendment in tax increment District Number 13 for $15,500.
Is there a, there's a motion and a second? Is there other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Hold on, Mayor. Martin's, for some reason, doesn't have a number three.
That's the old.
That's the old agenda.
He's got the old agenda, so I'll just use that. May I ask?
Sure. Can you?
At the end of the mo—
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. At the end of the motion, you said not to exceed then 15, right? Alderman Nichols?
$15,500.
$500? Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, if we could have a roll call vote, please? You guys have to do this before we do that.
I don't have number three on my agenda either.
This is number two that we're working on right now.
Randy, can you go grab James on the agenda if there's any?
There aren't any more.
I just don't have number three on this.
This is item two, the proposed service contract with Ellers and Associates.
Mr. Jacobson.
Okay, is everyone clear that we're on item two at this point?
Yes.
And we're ready to vote at this point then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Okay, item three is the Special Board of Public Works item that we just spoke about before the meeting. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to accept the change order and for the payment to IEI General Contractors. That's contract unit number 2021-05, and that is for the public protection facility shower rooms at the number station 35, Station 35 Fire Department, and then for the PD also, and that's an add-on of $9,985. Change order number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt for the change order to IEI General Contractors for the amount of $9,985.
There's no O in there?
We just had to clarify that this is just the change order, there is no payment.
He didn't get the rest of the council got it.
Oh.
Donkey from Farm.
Okay.
That's normal language for him.
Moving forward.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you, everyone. My, here's up here, thank you.
Item four is the Board of Public Works recommendation. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept the payment and change order, final change order, to Myron Construction Company, contract unit number 2020-06. That's for the public works facility construction project and the amount of $929.80. Payment number 16, like I said, and final.
Second, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. So, you came the right night, Tim. That last 900 bucks that we had, that building.
I think Tim was going to donate.
We'll, we'll look for at least the 80 cents from you, how's that sound? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item high is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for July 2nd through 15th. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of July 2nd through July 15th, 2021, in the amount of $773,342.27.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion? Well, you're going to have to vote. If we could have a roll call vote, please? That never happens at your first, Randy.
Yeah, you can beat Tom.
Yeah.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated July 19th, 2021.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item three is the development agreement between the City of Manassia and Discovery Point Apartments LLC. Do we have a motion? Alderman Schmidt?
I'll make the motion to accept the development agreement between the City of Manassia and Discovery Point Apartments LLC for the property of 225 Main Street, parcel number 3-00900-00.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Is there discussion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So, back in 2010, when I first became alderman, it was discussed back then about not wanting apartments anymore in the city. Manassia was known for apartment city, rental property, and tonight, we'll be voting on more apartments, and we don't even have the brim built, we don't have Bonta built, we have nothing on Gilbert site, and, and, and I, I know, I'm 99.9% sure, we're going to want apartments over in the waiting mill. Now, we're becoming apartment city again. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I do know that it's targeted for apartments. I would much rather be pleased if they were kind of condos, condos, at least those, the people who rent and own condos are going to be more stable residents of Manassia. The more renters we have, they rent for two, three years, many of them, until their house is built or until they decide to move or change jobs. And I understand the reason for renters, but they, they're coming and going. And I, I guess we made a push even a few years back, we'd like to change two apartment houses, or houses that are two residences, change it back to one residence, so we just establish main housing. And now, we're adding more apartments. I wish we would do duplexes, or I mean, not duplexes, I wish we would do condos instead and promote living in Manassia for a longer term than just rental properties. And we do our, seem to be getting heavy on rental apartment-type properties. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this agreement, I didn't see any drawings about the balconies and, and how that would look on this property. I certainly hope that the Planning Commission for the landmarks has done a great job in our downtown, making sure that things look right. I look at the Marina Place Apartments, and you've got a $70 fence between the apartments aboard, and it just doesn't, doesn't appeal to the facade on that building. So, I certainly hope that we can get a picture or a drawing of what this may look like in the future. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand where Alderman Langdon and Repella are coming from, but this is not in a different area. I mean, it's in a nice, prime area on the water, and I think when they did come in and present their ideas and stuff to it, they weren't cheap. And they're kind of very nice apartments that they want to have, and I think with the amount of money they're looking to have for those apartments, I think these people plan on staying a little bit longer than a couple of years. And I think Manassia's just got to start getting active and doing some of this stuff. You look at Nina, they're making apartments, Appleton's apartment, apartment, apartment. I mean, let's go, Manassia. We got a, we got property on real prime areas that they're, that, that will sell. So, I'm for this.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree, what we have to do is look outside the box that we've always been living in and what Manassia's always had. I've been parts of different, of a different community and have been part of a lot of these different discussions that have been happening on the trends and the way that trends are changing. The upcoming millennials and the younger generation are not buying homes like the people from my generation bought homes. They are, they want to be a little bit more transient. They want to be able to move around. They want to be close to downtown. They want to be close to trails. They want to be close to major highways. They want to be able to bike. They want to do all these things. This is also the generation that is working from home right now. COVID pushed a lot of that into people working from home. There's no need to go to an office building anymore. And I disagree with the philosophy that more apartments don't bring people downtown. Those people living downtown will bring their bodies to the downtown. They do want the downtown. They do want the restaurants. They do want the shops. They want to stay local, and we have to break out of the bubble of this doesn't fit. It's, you have to look long-term, not just five years down the road, 10 years. We have to look further down the road, and the trends are changing, and we need to change with them. Other communities are doing it. If we don't get on board with this, we will just be that little ghost town that everybody passes by and goes somewhere else. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to back up a second, and for the people listening and who will be watching this meeting at a later date, Director Schrader, could you tell us a little bit more about this project and what is being presented this evening?
Certainly. So, this is the 225 Main Street, so this is located, the former, or the original Bonta corporate headquarters in our downtown. We were approached earlier this spring, this summer, about looking to convert this building, this existing or formerly office building into 26 market rate plus units. So, basically, what we're looking at is, they did look at their financials, and but for TIF incentive, would not be able to, to finance this project. So, we are looking, again, that is tying to the tax increment District Number 13, and looking at really recreating that downtown and, and filling bodies into our downtown. You talk a lot about downtowns, the healthy downtowns are 24/7 downtowns, and that's oftentimes what you get from residential development downtown is those individuals downtown all the time to support the businesses that are also there. So, bit of a chicken and the egg thing, but we do, again, we feel strongly with this, with this developer. We have passed, as I think Alderman Taylor had mentioned, passed work with this developer for Development and Investment Group. They are currently constructing the Lake Shore Ridge Apartments on the far east side of our community. So, again, we, we feel strongly with this development and this developer.
Thank you. And I do see some representatives from the Development Group in the gallery this evening. Would it be all right to hear from them?
I don't know if they wanted to speak, but if they would like to speak, they definitely could. Paul, did you want to say anything?
No.
But I do need you to come up to the microphone if you're going to say something.
Good evening, everyone.
With that, I'll ask for you now, as consent, to hear from, what was your name?
Paul Clister.
And your, your address?
N8597, Fire Lane 9, Manassia.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to people here and to the community, to tell us a little bit more about who you are, your experience in, your general experience in the Fox Valley, and what you're looking to do for that building.
So, I am, I'm actually a principal in Commercial Horizons. So, Commercial Horizon is a very active development organization based in Appleton and Green Bay. Daily, you drive by probably 50 different developments that we've done. So, I mean, close to Manassia, we did the Festival Foods deal around the east side of Appleton, everything around the Home Depot, the Spectrum Building, Festival Foods, west side of Appleton, there's, there's a, I mean, the whole Catalpa Building project that was there. I could go on and on. So, if you look at our website at commercializes.com, you'll see, I mean, we just finished the United Health Building, office building in DePere, 175,000 square foot office building. We're finishing up 150,000 square feet with the Packers at Title Town. So, there, there's a lot of it. So, this, this venture is separate from Commercial Horizon. So, I have three sons that are, that we, we've created a new company called Four Investments. It's family-owned real estate, and it's, it's my, me and my three boys. We've been extremely active in the last few years. So, Downtown Appleton, we did Gabriel Lofts, we did Avant Apartments, we've done some apartments mid-state, and have a bunch of other ones in the hopper. So, we have a strong foundation of doing deals, working with communities, working with local builders, contractors, working with your staff has been terrific thus far. So, we're excited about it. And, and working with John Bergstrom, you know, this is a building, it's a tremendous businessman, right? I mean, if they, if that building could fill with another corporate headquarters or another office user, it'd be full by now. I mean, there's nobody on the planet that can create jobs in the downtown like John can. So, John, I consider a very dear friend, and I'm trying to help him out as well as Manassia, looking at the highest and best use for that facility and getting some increment out of it. You know, we own the Explexus Building out on 41 and Breezewood. Look at that, that's, I mean, it's a beautiful building, 120,000 square feet, and we have an 18% full with very little activity. I mean, that, that's the way of the world right now, whether we like, like it or not. That's what office is going to be. So, we're looking at to be creative in some of these other avenues to try and make something out of something that might sit there mothballed for a really long time. It's obviously a beautiful spot along the water. All of the other apartments, I think, I think our sons have done a phenomenal job as far as looking at the market analysis, and, and there were some great comments tonight about what the new generation is looking for, where do people want to live. And Gabriel Lawson and Avant were filled up within three months. So, you know, it's our goal to fill this up. It's going to be beautiful. I mean, it's a beautiful building, it's got great bones right now, and, you know, I, I think you'll be very pleased with the addition and mix of downtown.
Thank you. I really felt it was important. I really felt it was important for people to know that you're local and established and have vast experience in both the commercial end of things and now the residential side of things. And as far as who your clientele is, so who are, help us understand who your niche is for that building? Who are you marketing to?
So interestingly enough, even downtown Appleton, like in Gabriel's and Avant, we're seeing a smattering of different people, professionals, younger students. You know, we have some Lawrence students down there. What I anticipate here is probably going to be, might be guys like me that want to get the hell out of their house and live in a smaller space and not have to take care of, you know, a lot of big rooms. So we're seeing an older generation, but we're also seeing, you know, as mentioned, some people that are working at home that want to be closer to amenities that they can walk to. But it's no, you know, we're, Lake Shore Ridge, I think we're going to see maybe a little older demographic. But down here, I think you're going to see a little bit of everything.
Okay. And do you have any idea yet if you'll be, have Studio 1, 2, or any three-bedroom apartments?
So we're in, we're in concept design right now. So it's going to be mostly one- and two-bedroom apartments.
All right. Thank you for taking a few questions and for being here this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Paul Alderman Sevanek is next. And Paul, I just wanted to comment, for the people who haven't been out to see Lake Shore Ridge, it's coming along beautifully. The detailing on that building is spectacular. So if you haven't been out there yet, take a look at the type of buildings that they're developing as well as Avant and...
Absolutely.
And the Gabriel Building. Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody here, whether their comments were positive or not as positive, are good points. That's our job up here to do these, this type of questioning. Now, my personal opinion. Number one, we have a building that sits empty again in our downtown. It's a blighted building, basically. And that's what TIFs are designed mostly for, to take care of blight. And as far as issues of jobs, it may not create permanent jobs, but it will create a and retain a number of jobs in the construction industry, which is very important. Here we have an empty building. We should be honored, the fact that this developer, who's already shown their reputation throughout the valley, has become a good partner with the city of Manasha, and I hope that continues. We're going to take a building that has a value of 1.7 million and possibly turn it into a 4 million, well, it will have to be a 4 million-plus-dollar building as far, as part of the TIF. So I support this development, and I would ask that all of us here tonight show their support. And I think this is the first domino that'll, that'll drop for downtown Manasha. And I see this spurring on a lot more positive situations for our entire community, not just the downtown.
I appreciate your commitment to Manasha. And I was just wondering about, is there any control measures for, you see buildings in cities where people have flags hanging off the balconies or different window treatments and things? I mean, do we have a uniform look for this building? Do you have covenants or anything with your building?
So you better ask your folks here on staff on what, I mean, really. I mean, that's more of a local ordinance issue. But as far as us, we absolutely have very strong rules and regulations for our tenants. We don't take any crap. I mean, these will be well-policed, well-taken care of, well-respected between the tenants. So yes, I mean, we take that very, very seriously.
So you do have those control measures in the rental agreements?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kloster, again, thanks for coming tonight. What would be your, I know you mentioned that there are one and two, two-bed apartments, that type of thing. What is your price point that you're getting? I'm also the Alderman out there by Lake Park. So I have seen that, and it's a nice building. And I, I will take a tour before it opens up.
You're absolutely more than welcome. And as far as, I mean, I appreciate where we are in this process right now, right? I mean, we're just, this is the beginning. We have not, I mean, we are in concept review. This project doesn't happen unless this TIF district gets expanded and this development agreement happens. So we have done preliminary budgeting. We haven't done marketing. We haven't done any of that. But everything's going to happen very quickly. So if all of this comes through in October, I mean, our goal is then to start focusing on construction drawings. And we want to be doing demo come January. So by then, I'll be able to tell you what everything's going to cost. But there's going to be market rate. I mean, again, our boys have done a very sensitive marketing analysis of every single apartment complex, amenities, what it has to offer, what, you know, what the price points are. We're not going to be here. It's not going to be here, but it's going to be fair.
Okay. One last thing. I know last time when they came with the, with the Lake Park development, they had pictures. And obviously, you said that you're not even to that point yet where you can show the design of the future building. So we're kind of, we're kind of okaying this without, with trusting you, I guess, without...
You still have a lot of control. I mean, if there's something I learned 25 years ago when I started this, the worst thing I can do is show you a picture.
Okay.
And then, and then underperform. I mean, that's idiotic. To me, to me, is to do the fundamentals...
Well, we're hoping you overperform, but okay.
Well, I hope my reputation says I usually do.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
So this will go through Plan Commission, probably Landmarks Commission, I'm guessing, too, probably? I'm guessing it might be, but maybe. But it'll at least go through Plan Commission, so there will be review of the design. Thanks for coming tonight, Paul.
You're welcome. Thank you all very much.
Seeing no further discussion? I think we had a motion, a second, a while back, right?
Yep.
Okay. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is a donation request from the Fox Valley Labor Council. Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion that we make the annual donation. What was the dollar amount, 300?
250.
$250. Oh, yeah, there it is. $250 donation from the city of Manasha to the 38th Annual Labor Fest Celebration.
So motion and a second. And the reason this is on there is just so you and the public know there will not be a Labor Day parade this year. And they are asking still for the support for the Labor Festival. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance five. Do we have a motion? Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I'd like to introduce ordinance 0-5-21 and ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district at 670 Airport Road, parcel number 4-00798-00 from I-1 Heavy Industrial to I-2 General Industrial District.
Is there a second? A second. So motion and a second by Alderman Tomgrotty? Is there any discussion? No. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is Resolution 32. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution 32, our resolution approving an amendment to the project plan and boundary of tax incremental district number 11.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tomgrotty? Is there a discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
This is where I offer the amendment. We're, there was something that was left out in our CIP budget. We want to continue the trail along the Gilberts to go behind the Stadmiller's property and Coakley's property, so we can finally have a loop through the downtown. So I'd like to make a motion, and this will be in, this is already put in the CIP budget, like to make a motion to amend the project plan to add the Gilbert Extension Trail, extending the existing trail out to Washington Street as a proposed Phase 3 project located within the outside the district in the amount of 200K and reduce the Lawson Canal Engineering and Consultant Design within Phase 3 to 50K.
So motion and a second for the amendment. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I did notice upon looking through the plan that that segment of where that trail would be is not included within the map, the boundaries of the new district. So could you address that, Director Schrader?
Yeah, certainly. So we do allow, well, half of the trail would be within the existing district. So the warehouse that Alderman Sevanek had mentioned is within the district. But the Sea Coakley parking lot is not within the district. So with this motion today, we have talked with Ellers and Associates, who I believe is here, sitting around the corner, about this project plan amendment and how that would fit into the project plan. We would have to add some detail within the project plan in certain areas, including projects outside the district. So we would define that specifically there with this motion. And that would be approved with the final plan draft in front of the Joint Review Board in the coming month.
Thank you.
Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know who can answer this question, but the reduction to the Lawson Canal Engineering, what was it first set at? Do we know that number? I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, so what we had under Phase 1 was 250,000. And then Phase 2 was another 250,000. What we're looking at with this TIF is, again, worst-case scenario numbers. What we've kind of been looking at with some of the other grants that we've been looking at is we need to get a little bit more design done before we can really, they'll entertain our grant dollars. So what we're looking at doing is using some of this increment off this Bonta site in this new TIF to push that a little bit additional design as well as move that project forward in hopes that we can go and circle back around and look for that, those other grant dollars for the Lawson Canal project.
And you're comfortable with this?
Do you want to answer that, Mike? I'm comfortable with this. We had kind of this discussion regarding, you know, where we're at with the project. Again, we weren't anticipating any of these upfront engineering costs because we have, we already applied for the DNR stewardship grant. We're trying to do those mechanisms that we don't get too far down in design without the funding source to do the project. So we do feel like this can get us that step further and really start to look at, okay, those grant dollars and how to tie this whole project together. There will be, obviously, needs to fill those gaps, and we will be strategically looking at those. Because again, this wasn't originally the plan to put all of this engineering into TIF 11 for this project. But we are looking, again, at the worst-case scenario to keep the options open. The budget amount will still be on an annual budget amount set by the common council. So again, just because we're putting these dollars into the project plan does not mean city staff or the administration is outspending them.
Okay. Thank you, Director Schrader.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment, which is up on the screen.
Motion carries eight zero.
So now we have the motion as amended on the floor, which is the resolution approving the amendment to TIF 11 with the amendment that Alderman Sevanek just spoke about. Alderman Taylor?
Director, was there any grant money as far as with the electrical end of the utilities being incorporated in this project by the Manash utilities at all?
That, so that's a Manash utilities project. I guess on that aspect, I won't have those details at this time.
Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, in looking over the proposed projects within the TIF plan, it is very heavy on borrowing at this point. So are there ways in which those funds can be, the number, the dollars borrowed can be decreased? Are we looking into that?
For a lot of these projects, we are still looking at grant dollars of how we can associate those grant dollars. But we do anticipate, again, from an infrastructure standpoint, you know, it was noted, a lot of these TIF districts are created through a project. And then we have additional increment or funds at the end to do these projects, to put those in. What we're looking at this project is actually to put in the infrastructure that would assist in those future developments. So that's why the Oak Street side of things is in there in those discussions where that's going to create and open up additional development sites. We're always, again, looking for grant dollars, again, with like the Lawson Canal and other things. I know the ARPA funds were mentioned earlier. I know there's been a lot of conversations internally about what to bring forward from that aspect. So those conversations are ongoing, yes.
Any borrowing that would be done for projects within the TIF would be paid using increment?
That is correct. So I believe, and perhaps Jennifer can note this, but I believe the borrowing within a TIF does not go against our GO debt limit, correct? It does. I mistaken that. So is there any, I guess... Yes, but it would, we're conservatively looking at the increment coming in and that we have the increment coming in to pay down that debt that we are borrowing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then one last, very general question. The purpose of TIF as established under law in the state of Wisconsin. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
I certainly could, but we do have an individual that drove all the way up with Ellers that, if there's anonymous consent, could touch base on that general question.
Jonathan, would you be willing to speak on that?
In easy-to-understand terms. Thank you.
All right. Switching gears, TIF 101. Sure, the concept is to give local governments some control over how and where and when economic development takes place. And also to provide a tool to help to spur economic development, and that's the increment. It is essentially a tax capture concept. It's used in all 50 states, with the exception, I think, of Arizona. And, and so, you know, it's, it's, you know, a widely-used tool and concept that allows, again, for some control over how cities and villages develop.
And that can be, the financial component of that can be used for financing public infrastructure projects as well as economic development or incentives?
Incentive, yeah. Yes. And, and, you know, obviously, Wisconsin has a number of statutes that govern the application of TIF. And so doing, doing everything, you know, under those statutes provides some level of transparency and accountability for how those decisions are made. But I would just add that, you know, anecdotally, throughout the state, there's, you know, continual pressure on the capital stacks for how projects are financed. And developers are always looking for different ways that can, they can, they can close those gaps. And TIF has become the very popular way to do that. So as long as it's done in a way that meets statute, as long as, you know, you all still have control over how those decisions are made and how those funds are allocated, then, you know, it seems like a very beneficial program.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven one.
Item three is Resolution 33. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for the R-33-21, and that's for the authorizing of the borrowing from WPPI Energy.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this in the amount of 141,131 dollars?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
For the camera, can you explain to the people what that is for?
Sure. This is the solar array that is being placed on the new Public Works Facility. The reason we're borrowing from WPPI Energy versus just borrowing like we normally would is WPPI has a 0% interest loan program that can be utilized by member communities. I believe it's up to a half million dollars. Does that sound right, Jennifer? And we've used this in the past on our LED street lighting and a few other projects as well. So this is a really good deal for communities that are WPPI members.
And we are one of their largest members.
Okay, moving on to item four is Resolution 34, and Director Hutter, if you would mind, wouldn't mind sharing with us a little bit about this before we put a motion forward?
So this is a resolution to cease the public health emergency in the city of Manashe. We're bringing this forward to the council right now due to the situation that we are currently seeing in the city of Manashe as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. So I have just a few talking points here to go over with you that in January of 2021, our city had a very high burden, or case rate, of COVID-19 cases. That translates to us seeing over 100 cases in a two-week period. And now about six months later, we're seeing, we have a moderate burden, and we're seeing about three to four cases in a two-week period, and that's been sustained for the last five weeks or so. The Fox Valley region currently has a moderate burden of cases as well, and the number of hospitalized patients has decreased significantly since the beginning of this year, and nearly 50% of City of Manashe residents have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. We do want to point out that there is still some concern over the transmissibility, especially of the Delta variant that is currently spreading. It is more contagious than other virus strains, and there's still a lot that's unknown about it. However, we know that if we continue to take mitigation strategies seriously for both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals, we can overcome that and hopefully prevent seeing a spike in cases in the city of Manashe. So just wanted to reiterate that vaccination is the best tool that we have. There are three vaccines currently authorized in the United States, and they're all very safe and highly effective. And about 99% of the people in the United States who have died from COVID-19 in the past few months have all been unvaccinated. So that tells you that the people who are unvaccinated are at highest risk of COVID-19. And I also would like to mention that there's a lot of myths circulating around about the COVID-19 vaccines. So, you know, we really strongly encourage everyone to get their information from reliable sources. I would recommend going first to the CDC website or the Wisconsin DHS website for, again, reliable information and fact-based, evidence-based information about those vaccines. So back to the resolution. At this point in time, we feel that this is an appropriate measure that we can take. I believe the mayor would agree with me that if we were to see things dramatically turn around and change, that we might have other action to take.
And our next vaccination clinics are this week, as well as, there's one for back-to-school, too.
Yes, we do have a vaccination clinic this week, and the information is on our website. And then we also have one on Tuesday, July 27th, that we're holding in conjunction with the Manashe Joint School District. It's registration help time, that where families can come to city center to receive help for their child's school registration. So we'll be holding a vaccine clinic all day that day. You're welcome to call the Health Department to schedule an appointment or just walk in.
So with that, if anyone has questions or would like to make a motion, we'd be able to do that at this point. Not everyone all at once, though, please.
Looking for a motion?
Sure. Alderman Langdon.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept R-34-21 for the session of the public health emergency in the city of Manashe, introduced by Mayor Merkis.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. I was looking to see who you were typing. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Originally, when we declared a public health emergency, there was funding tied to that. So the city was eligible to recover certain costs associated with COVID-19. Where do things with that stand today?
Do you want to answer that, Christine, or do you want me to?
I believe included in the packet was a memo from the state of Wisconsin that did state that funding does not hinge on whether the city has its own public health emergency declaration.
Okay. I did see the memo, and to me, it was a little, it was about as clear as mud what, what was trying to be communicated in that memo.
That would be the message.
Oh, thank you. And Director Hutter, you mentioned that if the city were to cease the public health emergency, and we suddenly saw a sustained increase in cases, that other actions could be used. Could you talk a little bit more about what those might be?
Sure. I think we could determine whether or not it would be appropriate to declare another emergency in our city. And, you know, speaking from the Health Department, our powers would really be focused on individual outbreaks and as it relates to responding to those, if we're talking intensive contact tracing or building closures, things like that. Those would be those measures. But on a citywide level, looking at declaring an emergency should we feel that that is an appropriate action.
And I just want to read from the resolution. It's the first, be it further resolved. For everyone, the Common Council encourages employees and residents to follow the most current CDC guidance for fully vaccinated people and the guidance for unvaccinated people. If you have not received your vaccination, be it further resolved that the Common Council recognizes that people are at different stages and comfort levels regarding public interactions following mandatory COVID-19 restrictions, and asks that we be kind to one another, respecting people's choices regarding vaccination, face covering, and social distancing. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is Resolution 35. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. So I came up with this idea, and I asked Thad what, what he thought about it, and Mayor Merkis, what he thought about it, and I, they said they would help me with, with the resolution. But I thought this came to my mind that it would be kind of appropriate to do a resolution for Adam Alex. And so I'd like to make the motion for the R-35-21, a resolution and appreciation for outstanding public service by Adam Alex, introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon.
Second. There's a motion and a second. I am not sure who the second is. Any discussion?
I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to also say that we didn't invite Adam tonight to see this resolution. We're hoping he doesn't because we want to try to get him when we put, when Thad puts the plaque up over the conference room or next to it, to get Adam here somehow and have it shown to him at that time. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your motion of Travis McDonald as the Lead Control Commissioner for a term of 7/1921 to 7/1922.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sevanek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I also like to make a motion of your reappointment of Larry Hozie to the Housing Authority for a term of 7/121 to 7/125.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Alderman Sevanek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your appointments of Adam.
Austin.
Oh, excuse me. I had Adam on my mind. Austin Hammond to the Housing Authority and also to the Sustainability Board for a term for the Housing Authority of 7/121 to 7/125, and I don't see the.
Life sentence.
Life sentence, okay, for the Sustainability Board.
There are no terms.
Okay.
On the Sustainability Board because it's an ad hoc committee. Alderman Nichols. Is there a second first?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Does, I appreciate Mr. Hammond's interest in serving on both of these committees. My question is, does he live in the city of Manashe?
He does.
Okay.
He recently moved here. He is a recent graduate of UW Oshkosh and is, is very interested in sustainability, and he works for the Habitat Restore, so he has some interest in housing as well. We've been having a difficult time getting a quorum for the Housing Authority, so this will help us maintain that quorum as well.
Thank you. I always feel strongly it's important to have residents serving on our boards and commissions.
Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Go ahead. But you need to come back up to the microphone, please.
I guess one of my comments on the housing or the old Bonta building being changed into I haven't watched Manashe do it. I've watched everything from a new apartment building by Frank's Pizza on College Avenue to down at Gabriel Furniture, the old Post Crescent, and there's articles about people that live in the rural areas. It's getting hard for them, so they tried to move, they talk about low-income rentals. Well, up to now, the only thing I've seen in any of the newspaper or print or heard was the Post Crescent is going to be the most reasonable, and that's going to be almost $800 a month, and I don't know if it includes everything. There's parking below, but you have to pay for it. There's an air conditioner, but it's heat, water, all this. So these people that are selling their lifelong homes and looking for low income, now you're going all the way to 1,400 for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and this, to me, would be better off condos with amenities, a workout room, a hot tub, things like that. Now somebody's going to invest it. There will be people, look at the apartments there by First Community. Aren't those all full? I believe they are. Anyways, let them purchase them. They'll stick on them, they'll watch the market stuff, and if they want to move out, hey, and they make a dollar, they're going to sell it. But I don't feel that the rental, the gentleman said, until he gets some more, I'm not trying to diss the idea, but until he gets more, I think he left, until he gets more information, I think what you asked about what the price range. Well, after all the said and done and all the commissions and everybody looks at it and it's got ammonia in the ground or whatever the case may be, then is it maybe a little too late? So I think almost that the condos, I mean, we've got rentals, they're high. I mean, a three-bedroom, you're going to get, I got a three-bedroom by my house, $1,100 a month. No, I mean, but if somebody's looking to get into an area and they like the downtown, they maybe like the Weatherveen and Parker Johns and the whole ball of wax, they like, they got the view of the river, the slip, the, you know, now they have a roundabout to look at, but that's not, not my fault. Anyways, I think the, I think the idea of the condos for sale is a lot better than a rental, and like I said, as far as he goes, how far he has to go to get you a price range. But if any of you has watched what's happened in Appleton, I mean, here's this couple newspaper article says, hey, we sold our lifelong home, we want to get closer to the kids, closer to things, hospitals, doctors, shopping, things like that. And there is, the $700 all of a sudden turns into 1,200, $1,300. You might as well get the penthouse down there on Law Street up at the top. The guy's got a hot tub and everything out there from what I understand. But to my, that's my feeling anyways, and you can take it what it's worth. One other thing before I sit down, I hope an officer does not ticket anybody out in your handicap parking spots for not having a handicap sticker because they're not legal parking spots unless there's a placard on the building or a post in front. The fast taco truck could park there. Check with the state regulations. I've seen police get ostracized by a judge because they didn't know the rulings. They're supposed to be a marked handicap. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Sandra DeBille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Of course, the TIFs, I'm going to comment on, mostly for the people at home because it's very confusing. Manashe has 13 TIFs, we're probably going to have 14. Two have closed, neither one of those made any money, or very little, and what we did have, we threw it right back into the downtown. Right now, the way the TIFs in the downtown are laid out and overlapped, and we borrowed from them, from Third Street, down Racine, all the way to Annap, go over to Washington Street, it'll be out to Whitey Mill, back down over to Taco Street, and up Milwaukee, and virtually everything in that boundary is in a TIF. So all the, your property taxes that increase this year on your home, if you're living in that boundary, it's not, that increase isn't going to your school district. It's not going to the county, the technical college, or our own services here at home. That's what the problem is with these TIFs. When the mayor ran for election, the only TIF he was going to support was a new grocery store. Well, that came and went. We are not going to live long enough to see these TIFs close. And my problem is. And my problem is, not so much even if there was a project, but what you were all stating earlier with the one with the former Bonita building, when the tower was built, we were told 700 people are going to be in the downtown. When you moved into this building with the school district, it was going to be so busy with all these conventions and all these teachers coming here, the downtown was going to be mobbed. Nothing has happened. We have heard story, when the Marina was built, it was going to be a draw. We keep, I can't imagine how many millions of dollars we've invested in the downtown. I wanted to succeed, but the problem with a lot of these is that, well, and what we're doing now with the chicken and the egg, we're comparing ourselves to Appleton and Ena. They are now building housing because they already have corporate headquarters, they have hotels, they have banquet facilities, they have performing arts center, they have convention center, they have all these amenities that people want, are being drawn to, and that's why people want to move there. We don't have that. We have Parker Johns, Weathervein, and Jitters. Thank you, Randy. And the discerning part about this whole thing is that it's all the things that you aren't even realizing what's being thrown in this TIF. The kitchen sink, and why it's being done that way, whether it's a trail or a flower pot, or a park bench, or a street light, or another $200,000 for bridge amenities on top of the $500,000 we already allocated, is because as long as it's written in there somewhere, it doesn't have to come back to the council. Staff can just spend the money. They don't have to come back.
That's not true.
It's ridiculous. I said it before, the council has lost control. I'll say it again. You have lost control. Staff and the mayor are running the show. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.